Does everyone please stand? We want to let Mr. Stacy, someone, I've known Stacy.
Tracy.
Yeah, Tracy, a long time and he's the, as I always, at Wentzland, right?
Yes, sir.
And been there a long time and a great spiritual person and we're just very proud that he is here to lead us in prayer at this time. So, Stacy, Chris, if you please, do that.
Father God, first and foremost, we want to thank you, Jesus, for the ability to be here and talk about the business of our community. But Father, ultimately, it's your business and we just ask that you help us to be about your business and to seek your will in everything that we say and everything that we do for our community and for the children of our community. Father, we just thank you for your son, Jesus, for this time of the year, for his birth and for the forgiveness of our sins. And Lord God, we just ask that you watch over our leaders, surround them with godly people that will pray for them and lift them up and encourage them and ultimately hold them accountable to your service and to your will. Father, we just ask that everything that we say and everything that we do here tonight glorifies your name and your kingdom. In thy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, sir.
We will stand for the pledge now, Father God.
Yes, sir.
Uh, join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, evergreen, just as we are.
We'll go ahead and start our regular meeting. We're about three minutes shy, but that'll be all right. So, number two in our unfinished business, we have the approval of the minutes of the November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Cersey, any errors or omissions in the minutes?
No, sir.
Commissioner Patterson?
I was looking on the data, might be, might be one. I think it's very, very end, discussion action. See if I can find it here. I g- I guess, uh, this is, no. I think, I think it's okay. It'll be all right.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two regular scheduled meeting. I'll ask for that motion.
No motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor? Number three in our unfinished business, we have building inspector Keith Nicholson. We have board action discussion on building fees, although we went over this last meeting. Jim, under any further discussion on this? Has everybody had a chance to review the, uh, the pricing on this?
Yes, this way I have.
Any discussion before we proceed? Mr. Patterson?
I'm good.
I'm fine, sir.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion that we approve the building fee structure that was proposed to us by Keith Nicholson. Our last meeting, I'll ask for that motion.
I made motion.
I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
All right.
And our new business, we have number four. It's a board discussion and action, board action, on a variance request from Jimmy Underwood to build a house with a porch twenty-three feet from the edge and thirty-three feet from the center line of Ross Drive. Jim, when I went out and looked at this one and it appears to, thanks to being aligned with the, uh, the license kind of supplement given, um, a variance request on and, um, just basically it's private road in that subdivision and I didn't see any issues with it myself, but, uh, Commissioner Patterson, do you have any?
I think everything was in order, like I said, lined up with the others and, uh, I think, I think we're, we're good to go with that one.
No, I'm fine with it. It was good.
Okay. Is there anyone here to, uh, yes, sir?
Yep. My name is Doug Demora. I'm the president of the Stuart Highlands Property Association. It was turned over to us in April and in the covenants, folks, when Bubba Gibbs was the developer and, and since they've been taking over to us, there's always been in the covenants to be thirty-five feet from the property, from the, uh, li- edge of the line to the, wherever the property is built. And I think fifty feet from the center of the road is what it states. So, I mean, it's quite a ways over on the, on the limit there. And there was another house built on Ross that, that a garage was built probably ten feet from the edge of the road, fifteen feet. And I'm not, nobody, she lives on Ross Road and she doesn't remember seeing a variance posted for that. And just concerns of, you know, I know he's built a lot of houses in here, in this neighborhood and, and there's only a couple lots left that he owns and is developing. We're just concerned, especially if people live on that road, about how close everything's starting to approach to the road.
Sir, may I get your last name?
Demora, D E M O U R A.
How far is that from the center of the road?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yeah.
I'm glad you're here. Um, do you remember there ever being a variance request for that garage by chance?
I'd hate to say you knew what.
Okay.
I don't know.
I know there are several structures in that whole development that are, that have received, uh, variances.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I live on Ross, two lots from the house that Mr. Underwood's putting up now. The one he put up previously, there was never a building permit hung and there was never a variance for the house or the garage.
So, is the previous one right next door too?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that where, right next door to where, so?
You said two houses down, right?
There are two houses. You referred to it when you were reading that it looked the same as the one next to it.
Right, yes.
That one, we never saw a variance on and when the garage went out, there was never a variance on that one either. And there's never been a building permit. He's got two under construction on Ross right now and there's no building permit for either one. I'm new, so I don't know if they have to be there, but I know the other builders have, there is posted.
So, I do know on the one before that it was posted. I mean, that, any, any variance request that go out.
Where was the variance supposed to be?
The yellow tag that you see there?
Yeah, I never saw it and I live right next door.
And, and it was on the last one. If that's the same one that was right next door to him, there, there was one.
I did not see that one, but I do see the one on this one and it's.
I try to make sure they're all there, at least with the yellow tags.
It's very close to the road.
So, um, I tell you what I'd like to do, gentlemen, and it's just me, y'all can do whatever. I'd like to make sure that there's a variance request on the others.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Is Mr. Underwood here?
Yeah, Mr. Underwood.
I don't remember on the house to be straight and honest with you. The garage, it's in, it's in y'all's paperwork.
Yeah.
Cause I got that and this lady, I brought it to my kitchen. And that was the first time that I'd heard that it had to be posted out there for you to see. That was the first one.
I remember last time, and, and it was well within the timeframe, but I remember coming out and there wasn't one. And I think, uh, Mrs. Newton had called you to.
Exactly.
Make sure that you put that up.
Right.
In the next two days I went out and there wasn't one. I think you remember that being next door to where you ran. I would like to, um, possibly table this to check those variances, to make sure we have everything on file and also to, um, you know, to check the building permits as well. So, um, any discussion on that, gentlemen?
So, it'll be, uh, possible in January?
Yeah. It'd be, be first meeting in January. We won't, we won't have another one this, this, well, potentially we won't have another one.
Well, let me say something to my.
Yes, sir.
First of all, when this started, I was in bed sick of the flu, so the guys called one for it. I said, measure the other house. That's what we did. As far as this idea was not even brought up until after the foundations already put. So, my opinion, if they're looking after it, they should have seen it in the footers and had a problem with it then before I get them seventy-five thousand dollars in. So, it was there. We got the vari- I didn't get this variance here. I did soon as I got better, I know that I had to get a variance, but it was after. So, that's where we're at and that's exactly the way it is. So, but you know, here's my problem now. What I do now, I keep on up other, you have to get this through, right? In January?
Well, I mean, if, if this board chooses, that's the way it wants to go, yes.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Chairman. If we, if, if you find out that all the paperwork is good, can't we, Ms. Dawes give him, say it's okay for him to approve it? I mean, are you on, on some kind of a time?
Well, I've got wood sitting there now, but I mean, they're gonna have to go out there and figure out how to get it all covered up. Sitting there, my thing will be good.
Well, our obligation is to make sure everything's done by the letter of the law. If he finds out that it's done by the letter of the law, I don't have a problem with him if it's okay for him to say it's okay.
I know there was a variance on the last one, same, same. Yeah.
But you can approve anything, can you?
So, you have, you have a homeowners association, correct?
Correct, and we have covenants in place.
Okay. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that ends up being a civil issue at that point, correct?
You can give them a variance to, you know, build on the road. And if their homeowners association says otherwise, we have no control of their homeowners association. That's an issue between that and, that's a civil issue and that's nothing we could say yea or nay.
Do you want to table and check the paperwork, make sure it's all in, the permits?
Well, it's, um, kind of in the time right there, just because, I mean, you've got wood laying there and, and at the same time, you have, um, some folks who have proposed it, uh, do all the houses.
You don't get a buyout, mate, you didn't, whatever, you tried to.
But my question, uh, to the homeowners association, if it will, will just press the fact, if that be okay? Are there any other houses in there that, besides the, the previous one, that, that don't meet those requirements?
No, everything has been set back.
Everything is.
Thirty-five feet. When I built, I built my second house in there and I've set, I set it back thirty-five feet from the edge of the porch to this edge of the road.
Thirty-five feet.
That's what it says in our covenants.
There's also another house that I built in there that's not, I had to get a variance on that option.
So, we're, we're looking at a difference of two feet?
No, he's, he's saying twenty-three feet from the edge of the road. Right now, the foundation slab is just about thirty feet from the edge of the road, so fifty-five feet. And I don't think, we're just trying to make sure that, you know, that the rules have been followed. I don't think we're asking them to take up the foundation. At least that, yeah.
Well, first of all, you can't inspect the footer or you can't inspect any variance or not a building permit, right?
That's next one, probably.
Mr. Underwood, where was that building permit placed? Cause I walk my dog there every day.
I'm about, I didn't post the building permit, but I did post the variance.
Okay, so we'll, we'll address here and that way there's no imitating, it's okay.
Yeah.
So, um.
Quick question?
Yes.
I'm also part of the homeowners association. Did he, did this gentleman just say that he built another house? That's not set back correctly and he's gonna apply for a variance now?
No, I already did that. The house is already there.
All right. The other question is, if this gets approved, how do we get this gentleman to abide by the setbacks? In other words, that garage that he built with the variance is real, I mean, it's twelve feet from the road if it's a, if it's an inch.
So.
All right, and how do we prevent that, how do we prevent from more building close to the road?
So, obviously, I'm not giving legal advice or anything like that. But I would say this, if, if there's a builder that's coming in my subdivision that I have owner association and, and, you know, rules that we abide by, I would be trying to get with that builder and say, hey, here's our rules.
You know the rules.
And, well, but that's, that's the whole thing. Yeah, how many, how many homes has Mr. Underwood built in there? How many homes have you built in there, Mr. Underwood?
Four, these six, when I get these set.
Okay, did the other two meet the setbacks? Okay, the other two met the setbacks. We have one that didn't meet the setback, but you asked for a variance. Okay, so is there, and, and again, this is just me looking at the situation that was there. Is there a reason why we need that variance request?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Because on that, both sides of that over there, one of them is just because of the way the road was the first one I got, which is lot forty-eight. You can check it yourself. Okay, the next one I got over there is because there's an old road down there, so it drops off away and then you got a lot of wet layers on it. You've got a set to catch, you go to blow it, so it's kind of a judgment call of trying to stay out of it. Putting two or three lines in to get down in this, close to the wet ones. So, that's me. That's nobody else. That's just the way I. And this one here is even tighter than the one right beside it for getting down in that, what I call the runoff area now.
And how many more lots do you have in that subdivision?
I've got both lots graded. I ain't got a problem with this last lot. It's just this one I got a problem with.
Mr. Chairman, you know, look at, he does have a big drop off in the back.
He does. I, I, I mean, I feel that this will be the only way to, to put this home where it's at.
Right, it would be.
Just by going and looking at it, that's the only way that I would see that.
Let me, let me say one thing. They can look at lot forty-eight out there. If you get in the way of down the hill, you've got to cut down in and under the bank. Lot forty-eight, we have one act of a lot of erosion because everything comes right through that point. So, basically, if we build a foundation high enough to stay level, the road elevated away from the house, we don't get that a road. But when you dip a hole down, all water's gonna go to the hole. It's just like a pot hole in the road. Now, that's a hole. Why I try not to get too far off of the road and that's why I get a variance request for that. But I don't, I don't have, I'm just, where I'm at, that's all I know. Well.
So, this, this last lot that you have, there's, there's plenty of room for the last one, correct?
Oh, yeah, last lot down there, no problem. Didn't have any kind of problem for that?
It's set way back.
That's, okay. So, we're, we're looking at, how, how many homes are on that road? I'm sorry.
I have no idea. Ten or twelve?
It's ten, I think.
Can you guess it, ten?
I think it's ten.
All right, so we, and again, we're just doing the variance request is what we're doing, but we're looking at two homes that otherwise wouldn't be built. You know, it doesn't seem like they would be built in that particular situation, okay? It was just the way the land goes. So, you know, it'd be my opinion after hearing what we've heard. If, and you guys are fine with the last lot, cause he meets the set, he would be able to meet the setbacks on the last lot, correct? So, after listening to that, I, I just, you know, um, that kind of changes things for me in, in the sense that if that's the only place to build home, on this particular lot, uh, without getting into a flood, you know, catching water, then, uh, that may be something that, uh, for us all to think about there as well. So, we, we have two out of a potential eleven homes that are a little closer to the road than, than the homeowners association. You know, y'all rules and regulations, you know, would require, correct?
Plus the two car garage.
Plus the two car garage.
That's an after fact. It's not been proved. It's already built, so it ain't, what, what are y'all, what are they asking that our time?
No, no, but we just want to make sure the procedures are followed.
Right. My opinion is y'all have rules. I'm gonna give a setback. I did exactly that.
And, and I think that's, you know, has been clear in this situation here. You come in, you ask for a variance request, you posted the sign and, and that's where we're at, so, um.
Jimmy, was you, was you aware of the covenants in this?
There's a Denver road right away on Ross Drive than there is out on the other road. That I need. And yes, I did know, Johnny, that you're supposed to, that you're supposed to be thirty-five foot from the road.
What about where the garage is at?
The garage is like they said, it's close to the road. But that's why I put it there, stayed it there and put it out to get a variance request to be that. And I got that and I built it. I didn't build it first and then get it. I mean, it was there and it was approved through the board that I could build it there. I don't know if they were in that, if that was the time they took it over or what, but there was never a word said until that. And that's been built eight months.
Well, when he started on the garage, did anybody in this homeowners association go to him?
No.
You let him, man?
I had no idea who he was and it went up so fast, I didn't even know what was going on.
That's about true, cause that house was stuck with, it took eight months to build like that.
I think she's talking about that.
No, I'm talking about the garage.
I'm talking about the garage.
That went up very fast.
Well, again, respectful to her. She lives two houses, blow it, she's gone by it every single day. So, it ain't like that she dismissed it. It's there.
Is it a concrete slab and all that?
Concrete slab, wood structure.
So, he built this garage and, and nobody, uh, in the homeowners association wanted to stop a question or?
I never saw the variance. I, I was new at that point, um, when it went up and I didn't know what was going up. I live right next door to it.
The only people that go down that road are, of course, the people that live down there and, and, you know, they had sheet above as unaware of variance, but I didn't even know until the garage was built that it was even there. And all of a sudden, then someone said, hey, did you notice that garage built, you know, so close to the road? Didn't, wasn't even aware of it until someone sent a picture of it. But again, we don't go down that road. We go through different parts of the neighborhood.
So, if, if, and honestly, if the, if the concern is if he done this right, this particular variance request, he, so, and, and again, we.
If he posted that garage variance request and, and she was unaware how variances work and it was posted, then.
So, just so we know, there's a big yellow sign there?
Correct, cause I've done, I've built a garage for him and he had a variance request because we built it twenty feet from the road. And it was approved.
So, if, and, and here's the thing, we're just voting on to approve or deny a variance request and, um, and that, but that, y'all, you know, it, it becomes a civil issue with a, with a covenants from the homeowners association. So, all he's asking is for a variance request and, and that's, you know, he's done everything right to get that. So, um, gentlemen, any other discussion on that?
I agree. I mean, he's covered the bases here with his particular house. Everything, he is fine. What happened before, we have nothing.
I think the one problem is with this is he's, the variance, we're having this variance here tonight and the foundation's already poured after the fact. It should have been, the variance request should have been done prior.
Yeah, they should have been approved first.
Well, and, and from here on out, that's what we need to do. I mean, if a man's sick and he had everything lined up and was supposed to get it, then I mean, we have to take that into consideration as well. Um, and somebody's mumbling and, and not agreeing with that, I understand that, but, um, but at the same time, you know, if I'm sick and bad with COVID and I'm, we got this lined up to, to happen and somebody pours the walls thinking that I've done this, I, I mean, there's a lot of things that could go wrong here. So, you know, everybody, it seems like everybody wants to fall for it. What we should be doing is maybe working together to come up with solutions and that's what we're doing, you know? But it is just, uh, everything is contentious nowadays. Have we not seen that? As a look out there, there's not everything contentious?
Honestly, I didn't do this to get by, was not. Uh, I was sick. I told them to do it like the last house over there and that house, set it back the same way. That's what they did. And, well, that's worth that and yes, it was poured and then when I called it, then I'm trying to get variance request.
Mr. Nicholson, do you see any issue with this and all this, this building inspector?
I, no, I do not. Can we table this thing for, till, toward the end of the meeting? Let me come out in the hallway and see if we can work something out.
I got a couple. I, I hope you do because, because, uh, how, then how, if it's, if it's been poured without the variance? So, he comes to us and then he gets a variance after something's been poured. That's like, I mean, you see what I'm saying? So, I built the dead gone thing. I'll go later and get my permit and you're gonna, you're gonna approve it. You see what I'm saying? Without you, so how do you, how do you, how do you buy, or how do you get a variance after something's been done? Tell me that.
Truthfully, you should.
Okay, all right. And then, there again, how do you build something in somewhere and, and you know the variances? But also you got a homeowners association and you guys have seen this being built. And so now we're sitting here tonight trying to find a sit, or a solution to something. You see what I'm saying? I mean, and it's like the chairman said, we do need to come to a happy meeting on this, but, uh, it sounds like there's been some mistakes on both sides, um.
Well, and, and here, y'all pardon me for a second. A lot of times we go out to check these footers and looking at the difference, clearances from the road. It, it's got, the foundation probably has the right clearance from the road as it sits. If you notice, only in that variance is you're questioning for a, the structure with a porch, that porch would be on that thing. More or less he's asking for the variance because of that porch. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy.
Yeah, pretty close. No, it's, but the foundation's a little close.
Okay.
I agree with that.
That's his biggest reason for the variance is because the porch is going on the road.
And so with the porch going on, it's, it's gonna be even closer to the road. How big's that porch?
Eight, though.
Okay.
Are you putting the driveway in front like another house? Now your driveways. Your driveway is like ten feet away from the road.
Your driveway becomes part of the road. Which does nothing but help getting in the lawn, right? Cause at the end, I always put gravel on it. She asked me because of the strikes out back, I put the gravel on there. I said, no, I paid you to put it on. But at the end, any gravel I got left, I put on the road.
All right, so how about we do this? How about, how about we, uh, gentlemen, with y'all's approval, obviously, we, we put this toward the end? See if they can work something out at, uh, with Mr. Nicholson and, uh, and then we'll follow back up with it. That sound all right?
Yeah.
That's perfectly legal?
Absolutely.
All right, so that's exactly what we're doing.
Y'all want to step outside, those that, anyone that has interest in that, can step outside? We'll continue our meetings.
No kicking and shins, nothing like that.
Don't give me candy, please.
Get you some candy and enjoy. All right. Alright, so number five under new businesses, we have board discussion action on the Fannie County Development Authority Board reappointment of Teresa Badez for another three year term. This comes as our appointment. Um, we did have a letter, um, from the board, uh, where Teresa Badez would, um, would be more than happy to serve again if, uh, we choose to do so. So, um, gentlemen, any discussion on that?
I think she's done a good job, uh, in the past and had that experience. I think it could be a great thing for us to put her on board again.
Mr. Cersey?
No, sir.
Alright. I'll make a motion that we, uh, reappoint Teresa Badez for another three year term, uh, for the Fannie County Development Authority. I'll make that, uh, board, but Fannie County Development Board. All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Number six under new businesses, the board discussion action on the Fannie County Development Authority Board reappointment of Johnny Chastain for another three year term. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Mr. Patrick?
No, sir. I think if, like the other one, I think they, uh, sowed well and, uh, they want to continue to do so, it would be fifty counting.
Mr. Cersey?
No, sir. I was just, uh, enough shit, Mr. Austin, uh, wrote these letters saying that this all won't come back on it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna get it.
Alright, I'll ask for a motion that reappoint, that we reappoint, reappoint Johnny Chastain for another three year term for the Fannie County Development Authority Board. I'll ask for that motion.
I'll move.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Once again, as we do these, uh, board reappointments, try to find people at these boards if you're interested.
Please let, if you believe.
Please let us know. We will definitely, uh, pass your name on. Alright, number seven, uh, is the board discussion action on the Fannie County Board of Health. Reappointment of Robert Graham for another six year term. Commissioner Cersey?
Uh, no, Robert is a good asset, Kim.
Commissioner Patrick?
I have no issues with the reappointment.
I have any issues either. He's, uh, he's done well. He serves as the chairperson for them and has done a fine job. So I'll make a motion that, uh, we reappoint Robert Graham, um, to the, uh, for another six year term to the Board of Health. I'll make that motion. Ask for a second.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Ah.
Alright, we're rolling along. Number eight. This is board discussion action of the Fannie County Board of Health reappointment of Sherry Morris for another six year term. Commissioner Cersey?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Patrick, any discussion?
No, Morris has served as well in the past and again, she's a, she's an asset to our county.
I'll ask for a motion that we reappoint, um, Sherry Morris to the Board of Health.
I'll make that motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Alright, so number nine, as the board discussion action on the timeframe, on timeframe of calling for election to impose county special purpose local option sales tax. Excuse me. Um, I'll read this, so bear with me. Um, whereas the county's fiscal year begins January the first of twenty twenty-three includes on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And whereas state law requires that each county operate under a balanced budget adopted by ordinance or resolution. And whereas annual budget can be amended during the fiscal year to adapt to changing governmental needs. And whereas county staff prepared and have proposed balanced budget stating that anticipated revenues by source and expenditure by department for proposal fiscal year. One second, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah.
Alright. Uh, fiscal year, whereas the finance director submitted a proposed budget, uh, to the Board of Commissioners on November the seventeenth, displayed a copy of the proposed budget in the Fannie County courthouse outside the entrance to the suite of the Fannie County Board of Commissioners and on the county's website for public review and provided the county's legal organ, the news observer, together with a copy, uh, of the proposed budget. Whereas the public was notified through announcement at regularly scheduled meetings of the Fannie County Board of Commissioners, newspaper advertisement and on the county website, the proposed budget was available for review at the office of the Fannie County Board of Commissioners. And whereas the time and place of the meetings with the various officials of Fannie County to review budget requests was announced and made known to the public. Whereas the Fannie County Board of Commissioners held a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the public was notified via public announcements at the regulars, regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners through advertisement and through posting as well as via the county website of the time and date of the anticipated adoption of proposed budget. And whereas the Fannie County Board of Commissioners adopted the budget resolution of December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the twenty twenty-three budget for Fannie County, a political subdivision of the state of Georgia, has been adopted to provide as follows. See attached, which is a copy of the, uh, budget. Therefore, be resolved that the within resolution is adopted to confirm upon the minutes of the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual budget pursuant to the actions invoked set forth above.
Did you hear that, Jimmy?
No. I just went eyes, everybody can see it.
I was going, I'm in my glasses.
Yeah, I have to use my light cycle. Um, gentlemen, any discussion on this resolution?
I think we ought to ask the clerk here, if she has, as far as the figures go, she hasn't mentioned anything.
Um, if you have a copy of the recommended, uh, budget that they're speaking out tonight as far as the adoption of it, in the general fund expenditures, uh, there's a twenty-five million, ten thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars in that. Um, the total, grand total of all expenditures and grand total of revenues, anticipated revenues that should come in is thirty-nine million, five hundred and thirty-three, one hundred and fifty-one. Any other questions?
Mr. Austin? So we're balanced out?
Yeah.
We're kind of balanced, but that's a main thing, you know?
Yes.
That's a main thing.
Well, the one thing we should, can be very proud of is we're debt free. So no debt there, or just. Courthouse is paid for, that was done first year, so that's, that's a blessing.
So we can leave lots on work.
Yeah.
I know that, but one of the same, we can, we can, you know, we can, you know, we got lots, we can keep them on.
We have lots, you're, uh, good.
We don't get it.
So far, we feel.
Mr. Chairman, I have no dissenters over this.
Alright. Alright, I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget resolution. I'll ask for a second.
I'll save it.
All in favor?
Ah.
Good job, man.
Thank you. We have Marie. Um, number eleven, we have Marie Woody of the Fannie County Land Development, um, board discussion action adopting resolution on hazardous waste trust fund. Ms. Woody?
Misses, I have good news.
Oh, bull, okay.
A lot of good news to tell. So Ray Lee Maltzow is our contractor for the, um, warrant of the wells at the Fannie County Land, uh, with the Fannie County Land Bill. He contacted me about a hazardous waste trust fund. In two thousand and eleven, we had received eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. He prepared the paperwork on his end and I prepared the paperwork with the help of Lynn for our, um, for a resolution that was required and Lynn done the fifty year title history on it. And we stand to receive from hazard waste trust fund, a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Awesome.
So, uh, we have about five years left on the monitoring of the wells. If nothing comes up, most of the wells now are below the limits for the methane that the state requires. And so it's probably less than five years. Um, I believe it started in nineteen ninety-six and so twenty twenty-six can be our thirty year period for that. And I do have a resolution and I have not had to read it.
Uh, let me ask, can I, is it okay to ask you?
Sure, sure.
He said we'd have a hundred and what?
Hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars if the state proves the whole land under the hazard.
Where does that line go?
It's kind of at the county, general, general, yeah.
That's good. You want to jam me right, you can get it right.
Ladies, gentlemen, if anyone want me to read everything else? Read that resolution?
You can go ahead and read it.
No, do you want me to read it?
How long is it?
Eighteen minutes. Half. It basically is just a resolution, uh, that the Fannie County Local Government is defined in the rules of the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, Environmental Protection Division here under EPD rules, rule number three nine one three nineteen and oh nine. And whereas Fannie County is a county within the means of OCGA section twelve eight ninety-five B four and EPD rules thirty-nine three nineteen oh nine. And whereas the site is more particularly described in exhibit A, attached here two is a solid waste handling facility as defined by EPD rules, not my reading numbers again, uh, that have been placed on the hazard waste inventory pursuant to the Hazard Waste Response Act. Whereas the Director of Department of Natural Resources, Environmental Protection Division has notified Fannie County in writing that it is a responsible party as defined by EPD rules for the site. Whereas Fannie County has expended and anticipated expending in the future certain costs associated with the investigation, remediation, post closure care and maintenance of the site. Whereas the cost or portion thereof may be eligible for reimbursement to Fannie County by the Director of EPD in the hazard waste trust fund, uh, provided said cost or portion thereof is determined by EPD as eligible cost as defined in the rules. And provided Fannie County has met the eligible requirements set forth by EPD rules. Whereas the eligible, eligible requirements set forth by EPD rules requirement and other things that the following criteria can add over for the cost or portion thereof to be eligible for reimbursement. The local government has adopted the authorized resolution, which that's what we're gonna do tonight. And the local government has submitted to the Director of EPD a complete application for financial assistance on forms provided by the Director. Whereas Fannie County desires to make application to EPD for reimbursement of the cost or portion thereof on the forms provided by each Director of EPD as completed and attached there as in exhibit B. And to take other actions which may be necessary and appropriate to have the cost or portion thereof be fully considered for such purpose. And whereas in the event the attached applications are approved by EPD, Fannie County desires to receive the sum approved by EPD as reimbursement of the cost or portion thereof and, and to proceed administratively handling and utilizing such for such purposes. And whereas Fannie County, excuse me, is confident that they can otherwise satisfy the eligible requirements set forth in the rules. Now therefore, let it be resolved that Chairman Jamie Hensley is fully authorized to complete and execute the application attached here in exhibit B on behalf of Fannie County and to submit the same to EPD for its consideration. Be it further resolved that Ja- Chairman Jamie Hensley is authorized to take any and all other actions without further approval or action from the board, including but not limited to executive, excuse me, executing supplemental forms, additional, uh, application amendments, additional applications and the like, and providing additional information or documentation which may be necessary for the appropriate or appropriation in order for the cost or portion thereof to be fully considered by EPD for reimbursement from the hazard waste trust fund in accordance with provisions OCGA section twelve eight ninety, rule EPD three nine one three nineteen oh nine and other pertinent laws. This thirteenth day of December, Fannie County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, man.
You're welcome.
Quick question, Ms. Woody.
Yes, sir.
This one of the eight thousand dollars we're gonna get, the general fund, do we get it now or we have to wait to twenty twenty-six to get it?
No, sir. We will, when approved by EPD, the, the manager of EPD, we should get it in twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three?
Yes, sir. Because we just got the application completed, I don't think we'll get it before the end of this year.
Okay.
I think it'll be early twenty twenty-three.
I thought you said something about twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six will be, uh, there's a resolution in the signature page, please. Uh, the twenty twenty-six will be the end of when we have to monitor the wells at the methane and, uh, the gas wells.
We'll get checked, we'll get checked out here.
Yes, they will come, they will. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Apologize. And also I have the application and once that resolution is approved, that authorizes you to sign this application, so.
So also, the rig of those wells, that's been an expenditure for the county as well, right?
Yes, it has. It costs about fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars a year. Um, and of course, Mr. Melissa Low is gonna charge for preparing these documents. It's about that thick. It's not, it wasn't just a page. It was about that thick of check copies and invoices that he emailed to me and I printed all. So when we mail it to the EPD, uh, division, uh, they will have all the documentation.
Okay, that's good. That's good.
Alright. Do you have anything else? Alright, thank you very much. I'll, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution on hazardous waste trust fund. Just for a second.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Ah.
Good job, Marie.
Thank you.
Can I sign your ground twice?
Okay. Mr. Director, what does it start doing?
Are you speaking? I just had the salesmen go down. Do we have yours?
Yeah.
Oh, it's here, it's out here. Johnny, would you please read this?
I say, I can't do none of this.
And you got your glasses.
I know it. Where did I sign it? I thought I thought it might have.
Put your name in that place.
Well, that's.
I'm sorry, I.
That's what it was. It was, uh, that's.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I, 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 I'm sure getting me doing it. I missed that. Sorry about that.
So why don't you sign it now? I wanna apologize. I, I read number nine and skipped it. So, uh, this will be board discussion action. I need to go back to it. Uh, on a timeframe, calling for an election to impose a county special purpose local option sales. I, I read that out, and then just jumped right to ten. So I apologize. It's my fault. It is, so. We all know how, how important SLOSS is to us, obviously. Um, and this will be the renewal of our last, um, SLOSS. Um, hopefully come up in March. So, Ms. Dawson, do you know the timeframes of?
Well, we we just have to vote him in that way, we, Fannie County. There is a procedure for the city of Morganton is, is not eligible to participate. The city of Blue Ridge and the city of McCaseville have already had the required meetings. Uh, when we negotiated laws, local option sales tax, we negotiated SLOSS. You may remember we've already had that. We've got to finalize our intergovernmental agreement. That should be done by the first meeting in January. At that time, each city would say of their allocation, this is what they're going to use it for. And likewise, this board would say of the allocation, X percent is going to public safety, X percent is going to road and bridges, X pers- X percent is going to whatever it's going to. And then that document, to, to meet the call of the election, which we'll have to call by the second meeting in January, they give time for ballots to be printed and all. That's why we've got to have the agreement. Um, and then, uh, the actual vote will take place on March the twenty-first. That's the third Tuesday in March, and that's one of the four days that the state of Georgia says that you can have elections like this. This will allow the county's, uh, special local option sales tax to continue seamlessly. We, the current one will expire the end of the third quarter, which is September thirtieth. And this allows us to continue drawing or collecting that money on October first. Um, State Department of Revenue tells Fannie County that a little over fifty percent of our special local option sales tax is paid for by districts to our area, which allows you gentlemen to sell the millage rate that is literally the lowest in the state of Georgia. We, we get to do a lot with other people's money. So when, you know, Saturday, if you really are fighting to get into ankle, just remember next week, go on Thursday and just say how that comes. We appreciate you being here.
Revenue.
We appreciate your revenue, sir.
Do we have, can we, do we have, can we say something?
Absolutely, so are you willing?
You need to vote for SLOSS. I mean, hey, it has really, we have, uh, assistant fire chief, we have, uh, the road superintendent. They have the fire chief here. You guys, I mean, uh, we do, we have us up here, uh. That, I did not know how important that was until I got elected. Uh, and, and getting to come in here and see what we get to do with this. We're actually putting it out there for the people, and that's the way it should be. And, uh, we've, you know, Eddie's here, he's building parks. And so, these are people that you can ask them how much this has helped. It, it's really something whenever you can lower that millage rate and, uh, and help people's property taxes and, and, uh, it's really done a great thing for us here. And I, I hope and pray that we still keep us.
Yep, it has been years, and that's, that's our hope, just we continue to be able to, uh, get the SLOSS coming in, so.
Yeah.
Very thankful for what we have, and, uh, very thankful for the, for the SLOSS to come, hopefully, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Give just a minute for our clerk to tell us how much money SLOSS brought in to these, uh, things that we have at these departments from last year.
Yeah, I think I were, uh, if I remember correctly, I have a report that I file to DCA every year. Um, that, that, we collected around nine million, a little over, in SLOSS last year. So, and I would like to point out also, Eddie O'Neil, the, uh, rec director, he is here also in that. That funds a lot of the fields and activities and equipment.
We're building another park.
Yeah, I mean, all that. It funds everything for the community here to enjoy. So, we just rene- need to remember how important, and all the functions, public safety, um, you know.
Vehicles?
Yes.
And the roads?
Fire trucks, ambulances, um, it would just really be a shame to lose that.
And, uh, another thing I didn't even say, is just like this board, also is, uh, we're getting ready to approve and upgrade our tankers, uh, which is gonna help a lot on the ISO ratings, I assume. And Larry's been working on a lot of that stuff, him and Rob, and so, uh, you know, it's, we're putting it to good use. I mean, we're putting the works in there, putting, sparing.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're voting tonight to put this on the ballot, correct, in March?
Yes, sir.
Well, we.
Wheels.
Mr. Richard, we can't, we'll have to call it in January. This is just the discussion. So that because when, in January, one of the things that has to be done is that of the allocation, then it has to be like X percent goes to roads and bridges.
Right, that's what I was getting ready to say. So, so, so you're, you're going to in January, start laying out the projects that are gonna be on the ballot, how the ballot's gonna be written?
Yes, that, that, that's what we have to.
And have you identified the split? Is, is that just something set already, the split with the other cities? Morganton is not available for it, but I know McCaseville, Blue Ridge. Has that split already been set up and negotiated?
It, it, it was negotiated simultaneously with the local option sales tax earlier this year so that we don't have, didn't have to do it twice. We held, we held one meeting, ended it, held the other one on the same, on the same two or three days, uh, so that we could get to this point.
Can you make the agreement on the laws and this at the same time?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Two different meetings, but yeah.
I, no, I got it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's it. It's just, we don't want, I didn't want to, I mean, the law says that we discuss the fact that we've got to have this meeting.
Okay.
And we want our citizens to know that it's coming up. It's critical, like, just in a minute, I anticipate hearing from Mr. Thomas, our fire chief, and Mr. O'Neil. And if they're voting to spend money, at some point, one of these gentlemen is gonna say to the clerk, and that comes out as SLOSS. And what we as taxpayers can say is, and we're only paying half of it or less.
Or less, or less.
All right. Number twelve, we have Director of Recreation, Eddie O'Neil.
I'm all for SLOSS. I'm not reading the books, so. So, uh, our mowing and cleaning contract with, uh, that we set contract for the river parks, that's all ending in January. So we have two choices. One, which I would prefer to do, uh, your approval, is just roll over the current contract that we have, which is green, lawn service. Or two, we can go out to bid. But these guys do a phenomenal job. I've had good ones, and I've had bad ones, and my problem is a lot less when somebody's doing a good job at those parks, so. So what that is, is, of course, you've been town park, that's mowing once a week, and the mowing seasons year-round, they clean the restrooms three times a week, to pick up all the trash, take all of that off. And there's a lot of that. They do mowing above park drive at Tomboy Park, and some outskirts at the seed park, all that mowing, and we do. Uh, it really saves us good boys to set contracts out. So, and they've agreed to do it the same price as they've done in the last contract, which was a twenty-four month contract, so. I would, uh, I would prefer, if, if possible, to just roll that thing over and keep it going.
We're looking for a twenty-four month contract, you know?
Yes, sir.
Tell me about, what about Blue Ridge? How, how does that?
They clean the restrooms.
They do.
They mow some of the outskirts. We do the fields, we do the land services. They'll do the outskirts, they'll do the trash, and they'll do the restrooms multiple times at those parks. At all three of those parks.
Well, that's gonna be extra, isn't it?
It's the Blue Ridge City Park.
Blue Ridge City Park.
Yeah, here's the total. The total is, for mowing during the mowing season, that season was forty-three hundred seventy-five dollars a month. And then the cleaning of the, those three facilities is a thousand and eighty dollars a month. That's year-round. Those, we don't close parks down in the winter time, they're open.
Right.
Restrooms, trash, and all that is still there to deal with.
And you're happy with this group?
Yeah, they, they go above and beyond for us, so.
And no price increase in the last of you?
That's correct. No, no price increase. That's why I would recommend we just roll this over in the quality of work. As I said, we've been, I've been on both ends, so. And Horse U Ben is just the, the amount of use that park gets is.
I'm making the motion, he's as I can do this.
And you said it's forty-three seventy-five a month?
That's correct, and ten I.
All right. Any others discussed?
No, sir.
I have none.
I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make the motion.
To do a little motion contract. He makes the motion, I'll ask for a second.
Say.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
David, spare a minute real quick. Sorry, guys.
We can here to make updates a little bit on Blue Ridge City Park. If there's any changes afterward.
Yes, on Blue Ridge City Park, the, uh, I've met with engineers twice this week. We are probably halfway done on the actual engineering of that. And the goal is to take the new pool and spray pad out to bid in late January, and hopefully have those bids in, and, and award that contract in early summer and possibly get started, uh, at some point in the, in the warmer working weather, so.
Is there any other?
Engineering's almost done.
Any other projects going on over there that's?
Yeah, we, we're building, uh, obviously, we're doing the walking track at, uh, Horse U Ben Park. That's three tenths of a mile, uh, along with a dog park and inner parts of that. And that's all tourist production development money, which is a SLOSS tax. Uh, that's, that's begun. Uh, the surveying's been done, that's been laid out at that point in time, and then we'll move further. We get the pool design, we can set up pricing for a possible walking trail at Blue Ridge City Park, and get some surveying and layout done on that, so.
Cause you've already got the fields done?
The fields are ninety-five percent complete, got to put up two foul homes. And our, our maintenance group will build the scores tables. That's something we'll do internally. And those fields are completely.
Tennis courts done?
Tennis courts, all that's done. Tennis court's been redone, uh, the parking lot's been silcoed at the city park.
Has the trailer been removed?
Do I?
Has the trailer been removed?
No, the trailer's still, the trailer's still not there yet. We're waiting on that.
Okay.
Of course, it's in there, so. Uh, there's a lot of stuff going on. I actually redoing the fencing on the last field that hadn't been upgraded at Tomboy Park out of TPD money, too, so. Hope to start that in January, I would say, so. A lot of projects, uh, we just need some later.
I get it.
Yep, thank you.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're good.
Thirteen, we have Public Works Director Zach Ratcliffe. More discussion action on cancerous mailing lane.
Let's stop, uh. Yeah, just a little.
Also, good learn.
Yeah, we got, uh, we got a couple here today that, uh, had proposed a little deal about doing a, uh, I guess you'd say, uh, a detour from Gilroy Ground away from their, their house and taking a curve out. And, uh, uh, you guys wanna come up and explain what you got going on? Um, like, tell us a little bit more about what, what they're proposing, and, and, uh, be honest with you, what they've already proposed, talking to me about, uh, I'm in full, full with, uh.
Support of it?
Yeah, I am supporting of it. Uh, they've got a good thing going with them right there, and it's gonna help us too, so.
It will help, uh, it'll help you?
It will help us, and it won't, as far as I understand, it won't cost us a thing, so. Just gonna approve road.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Can I, can I just hand you guys pictures? I think would help. I'm jumping right to a, a presentation to get done for Chairman here, uh, earlier in July. Actually, I'm turning these to the wrong page. Go to the page ten. It's a bigger picture of that same thing. I think it, it'll give you a better look.
Can we reach out, man?
Ken and Debbie, yours.
Ken and Debbie, yours.
Debbie's agreed to take all your questions today. Cause she loves, she loves getting up in front of crowds.
How long have y'all been with Fannie County?
We, uh, had a place here since oh four, but we moved full-time in sixteen. And, um, as the story goes, we drove, yeah, we drove past this home, uh, that was built, weren't planning on buying a home. And as she, as I turned to her, I said, it's gorgeous house. And she looks at it, she's like, this is beautiful. I said, what idiot would buy a house that close to the road? And I found out within twenty-four hours, I was that idiot that was buying this house.
So, you bought it, didn't you?
You bought it. Um, and, and it was so funny, the first night we're in the home, uh, that we wake up to about six AM, this lady holding a horn on it, she's going around that curve you see there. And we woke up, we're like, what was that? And then later, like, eight o'clock happened again, and so, long story short, we got, we got them to stop honking as they went around the horn, uh, around the curve. And we said, okay, we were fine. It was, it was no big deal. We knew it was close to the road, wasn't the issue. The real issue is, in four years, what's happened in our county to growth is tremendous. And the cars that are coming around here are going so fast. And they literally eject into our driveway because they can't see around the curve. And long story short, we've talked to so many people, or they've come to us and said, can't you do something? Can't you talk to the county? And that's what we decided to do. We pursued, um, Mr. Hensley and asked if we could maybe adjust the road and improve the road for the county. It's a win-win for everybody. It's a win for us, it's a win for our neighbors, it's a win for the, hopefully, the county as well. Um, when you look at the curve in the road, all we wanna do is straighten it out. When you look at what's there now, it takes that whole curve out of it. We had a, um, preliminary site plan done. We, we put a center line in the road. We've had, um, Zach out, we've had Mr. Nicholson out, we've had Candace Newman out. Uh, and we actually had, um, um, what's his name, Bruce Hamilton from Hussey Bay Gale Gate come out as well. And they all looked at it, and everybody agreed, this would make sense if we can figure out how to do this and do it right. And we wanna make it even better than it is now. We're talking about maybe twenty-foot road. We're trying to chip and seal it as well, because our fear is if we don't do this adjustment, and that road gets tripped and sealed, which is in the county's plans, this is gonna turn into Turn Four at Daytona. They're gonna be coming around that curb so fast if it's tripped and sealed. And we're just, the, the, we have dealt with numerous, you know, incidents of them hitting our fence, backing up, and trying to get out of cars' ways. We're just waiting for the day when a car doesn't eject into a driveway and actually tumbles down into the driveway. Because it's, it's literally come that close in the past. So what we're proposing is, working with the county to your specifications, building or improving the road at our expense. Uh, and then when that new road is actually put in and installed and approved upon by the county, we would just trade the roads off. We'll take the old road, and you all take the new road. Uh, the good news on that, I think it shortens your roads in half, because the old road is eight hundred and, uh, fif- eight hundred and fifty- Uh, the good news on that, I think it shortens your roads in half, cause the old road is eight hundred and, uh, fif- eight hundred fifty feet, I think. The new road are only four hundred and twenty feet, so it actually shortens it. And then it wouldn't matter when we tripped and sealed and do the rest of the road.
Is this your property up there?
Yeah, we're right at the, right at that peak, if you look at that.
And where that road, the proposed road you're talking about?
Yeah, we own all that.
That's all your land?
Yeah, we're not supposed to doing anything on anybody else's property.
So you, you still on both sides of that new road too?
Yeah, it would be the, it would be the same setup we have now.
And you're the only person on this, uh, or the only residents on this cache right here in the curb?
Correct, correct. And we've, we've actually reviewed this with our neighbors, both on the far side of us, which is after all this property. And many folks up all the road, and we've got nobody that's not in support of fixing this curb in some way.
And Zach, you're forward?
Yes, sir. And he mentioned the horn blowing, it, it did go into the folks' explanation for that. That was the warning, that somebody's coming.
Yeah, they were just, she was so scared. We actually, one of our neighbors went and approached this poor woman, she was an elderly woman. And every day she'd go to work in the morning, and she'd hold the horn on it the whole time around that curb. And then when she came home at five, she did the same thing. And he went and talked to her, and she said, "I'm just petrified going around that curb."
But it is, uh.
It was funny, the way this all came about was our, our, our UPS man, Tracy Holloway, who we miss greatly. He's the one that came to us one day and said, "Don't you own all the property?" I'm like, "Yeah," he said, "Why don't you talk to the county about adjusting the trip?" I'm like, "What? Can you do that?" And we kind of, kind of threw away, well, more people kept telling us, "Can you do something about this?" I'm like, "Well, it's not my road, I can't do anything about it." And then we started talking about it, and like, "Maybe we can." And we met with the chairman in, in July and kind of proposed, "What if we bore the expense and we did it to your specifications? And we had your team kind of approved the outcome? Is that something we can do?" Let's, let's talk.
So you're not gonna build it, Zach?
Just gonna observe.
Yeah, well, you, I need observation. We've never built a road before, so.
I don't know if you guys got anybody, um, to talk to about, about doing, yeah, but I know you talk about.
Yeah, we have three, um, with Zach's help, we, we asked, can you just recommend who we would go to? Who would this, who would the county contract, contract with? So we talked to Jeff Holloway, we talked to, um, Johnson Pavers, and we talked to, um, Kevin Lance, who's Contract Solutions. Um, they've all been out, they've all looked at it, and they all absolutely think it can be done within county specifications without any issues at all. So we're just waiting on bids back from them on how much it's gonna cost.
Is it chip and seal, you say? What's that, chip and seal?
Well, that's a, that's an issue we're having. None of those three do chip and seal.
I didn't think so.
So now we're kind of stuck on pay.
Well, that's gonna be connected to Cassius Valley Road, that's payment, ain't it?
No.
On the Cassius Valley Road, and it's just chip and seal.
Oh, it is?
Cassius Valley, this part of Cassius Valley Lane doesn't connect to road, it connects to Bushy Head.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then goes out to Cassius Valley Road.
So where you, where you gonna pay it? Are you gonna pay it asphalt?
At this point, we, I'd be willing to do asphalt. I don't know that we can, because the rest of the road's not gonna be asphalt. So we, we think, we're talking with Zach, chip and seal makes the most sense, but I can't find anybody that does chip and seal.
We don't do that no more?
The county does.
Well, can't you pay us to do it?
We're clearly in this situation.
Okay, I, so, uh, we don't do that.
That's fine. That'd be great.
I mean, if Zach's gonna be out there overseeing it, I trust his judgment, you know what we want. And if we provide that service and we can do it, can you have a problem in doing it?
Well, it's on the plan to do the rest of the Cassius Valley Lane.
It's on the local board, yes.
What we're doing there to draw up, uh.
Draw a contract with them that says that X, Y, and Z is gonna happen, and he's gonna give me X, Y, and Z. And that at the end of X, Y, and Z, the county will quit paying X to them, and they'll quit paying Y to us. Act, I'm a root just.
So, actually, okay.
We did this when, uh, with Mr., we did it with Mr., what, Coop Mason, I don't remember. I was gonna call him by his proper name, but we did this with Mr. Coop Mason when we did Lexington. Way back.
And I was a big goof, very confused on the right one.
Yeah. So there's a history of doing this type of community partnership.
Okay, cool. We, um, Candace also reached out to, I think she said it was Tracy with EPD. Because at the very beginning, when you see it going straight, it's close to Fighting Town Creek. So she already reached out to EPD, and they've already said that as long as Zach's involved and the county's involved, they're willing to give us a variance for being that close to the creek. It's only about, I forget what he said, it was like ten feet of it.
It's good, it's not much.
It's like real, it's very negligible about how close it is to the creek. And she had talked to Tracy about it, they said, "No issue at all. As long as the county's involved, Yurvis has our approval."
As long as his eyes is on it, I don't have a problem with it. And we can do what Lance said.
I'm good with it.
All right. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
It's good for safety too.
Yeah, it is.
I wouldn't want another lady coming around in the morning at me all the time. It'd scare me bad.
I don't blame her for doing it.
We should, we know she's coming though.
That's right, I know she's coming though.
All right, so, um, you have no other discussion? Um, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve this, um, change of the road, if you will, um, on Cassius Valley Lane. And, and enter into a, an agreement with Mr. Miss Yurvis. I'll make that motion. Ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Thanks, guys. Is that true?
Yes.
You don't have any concerns, Zach?
No, sir. As long as they, as long as they've got some stuff drawn up there, and I looked it over, and we discussed it quite a bit, so.
Okay.
I feel pretty comfortable with what we're doing.
Yeah, deal. All right.
I have, uh, something that just sort of topped up today. Uh, one of my aggro mowers, what I call it, they, it's the one that reaches out and does the, the long arm mowing. It, uh, it has been getting troubles, has been getting troubles, and, uh, we talked about sometime, like, I guess it's probably been in the shop for three or four months, just to find out what's wrong with it. And I got the information back today, and we've got internal transmission issues. And this machine, if we went and went out and replaced this machine today, I'm guessing, if we're lucky, and can find one for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So repairing this machine is eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. That's what Mason Tractor Company. And this is just an estimate at this point. They, uh, they, they, they feel pretty comfortable that they can get it going for that, so.
Eleven thousand?
Yeah, you gotta, I mean, you gotta.
How long was that, Zach?
You know what thing is, uh, I think it's probably, probably four years old, uh, like.
Still good things for it?
Yeah, it's got a, it's, it was running every day until this transmission came out. I have two of those things, and they run every day until this one went down.
How did it go? What happened to it?
Uh, something in the transmission went out.
Okay.
Something, uh, what happened to it, but I can't give you the answer.
Does, um, does Mason's put any kind of warranty on it for their later parts?
I, I don't know, uh, um, they, they sent this to me this afternoon, and I didn't get a whole lot of information other than this on it, that that's what we think to fix it. But they've been under warranty, uh, they've been repaired warranty, I think, they've gotta be some kind of one of it. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but normally there's a little bit. I'd say anything they put in, hard to base them for. I hate for this thing to sit, and it, uh, it's, it's critical to keep that stuff.
How long will it take them?
Uh, that part, I'm not sure either. They've had it since, uh, August maybe, so it's been down for a while. And then you go down there in the shop, and there's stuff piled up here, or to, you just had to get in line, so. Right now, I'm in line, if I can get this information back to them, and they can get the part fixed, they'll turn it around pretty quick, so.
If we get the parts, could our guy do it?
No, it's, that's, it's intermediate piece of down there.
That's a big, big job.
Yeah, we've been.
Don't hurt the ass.
No, I'm, I understand. Or even like there at the end. Yeah, yeah. Um, I know, and this will be, this will come along, sploshes. So here we are, here we are at the splosh money that the taxpayers are not having to take out of the tax bill, so it's coming from our district tax or whatever you want to call it.
I like it.
So, yeah.
Well, do you have any discussion on this?
I have none. We, we need it to get fixed, cause season's coming up.
Very quick, well, I'll use it, I use it all year.
Yep, a twenty, yeah. Well, months out of the year.
Yep.
It's just that, it's only four years old. I mean, you know, it's, if it was twenty years old, we'd be thinking that a little different.
Yep, exactly.
Um, in, in my mind, but if it's been four years old now, um, when you get it fixed, you know.
And with that being said, I know it's like we're talking four years, I think it's got four thousand hours or something like that on it right now. Yeah, we use those things every day, and, and nothing's gonna stop growing. I mean, it's gonna grow. So something we're gonna be probably thinking about is looking into a new employment to replace some of these others with as we go. But, but right now, I'd like to get this one back up and going.
Yep.
And getting a splosh money would come on you.
Will give us some time to check on it for the next year or so. All right, any other discussion, y'all?
No, sir.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, pay eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents for the, um, to get this tractor fixed. I'll make that motion. Ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Please, just check on, uh, make a timeframe, and if there is a warranty on there.
I would, I would as well, I'd, thank you, yes, sir.
Number fourteen, Fire Chief Larry Thomas, uh, for discussion on purchase of equipment. And we also have Deputy Fire Chief Rob Robinson. Wait, I'd say I have a little, I do like some coffee, this, uh, we're looking at.
Is that the specs on the forestry truck?
Yeah.
One second, ma'am.
That's the.
Oh, the tank here.
Oh, cool. These are class A, thousand gallon units.
Oh. Baby's red, ain't it?
Ladies and gentlemen, would, can we pause just for one more please?
Yeah.
Sorry, we, they take just a little break for a moment.
Sorry.
There you go.
Two, uh, the good stuff here, so, um, Fire Chief, will that be fire from the area?
Uh, what we're trying to do is, uh, we've got seven tankers that are outdated and, uh, worn out and out of service that we're trying to eventually replace. Uh, we've been focusing on getting our, uh, frontline engines up to, up to snuff, so to speak. And we did a pretty good job of that. We've got, uh, several new trucks, newer trucks and all like that. But these tankers, uh, we've got, uh, four that are engines that have been taken out of service. Because they look past pump, gas pumps worn so bad, and we dropped them down to a tanker. They still pump and everything, but not up to a frontline engine. And the others are, uh, from nineteen eighty to nineteen seventy-four straight trucks, that are straight shifts, gas burners. And we don't really have anybody that can drive them, plus the trucks are, it's a seventy-four model, it's just getting too outdated.
Then again.
Uh, yeah, and we're looking to upgrade our, our tanker fleet. These trucks we're looking at, uh, they're twenty-five hundred gallon, uh, tankers with twin axles and automatics, diesel. Uh, everything we're replacing, uh, is thousand gallon trucks, so we're actually gonna like get two for one. With these bigger trucks, dual axle, mobility, we can get in and replace it with them. But, uh, forestry's got that deal, what is it, ninety-one thousand each? That truck comparable's, uh, pushing two hundred thousand if we buy it through, uh, uh, merchants or anything like that. And like I said, it's a thousand gallon unit, class A company, uh, so we get ISO credit on it and all that.
Yeah, for the pump.
So for the pump, so it's, uh, a lot of the trucks we're replacing, all the straight structures is trash pumps, and we get no ISO credit, credit for the pumps. So we're also gaining that, uh, purchasing these trucks. Uh, forestry says we can get two a year, so if we get two this year, and then work on getting, make two more each year, uh, we can upgrade these things for a fraction of the cost.
I don't know. Are they new?
Oh, the oldest chassis that they've been put on is two thousand and six. Uh, the forestry representative said it'd be newer than that. And Larry told us also a stipulation, if we get the truck and we don't like it, we can give it back to them. So we're not held to buying the truck if we get them and find something wrong with it.
What are you gonna do with the old one?
Now, that, uh, the engines, uh, like the, the Ford Pierce engines, that's about all you can do with them, is put them on. Dot go, and get rid of them. Straight trucks, like I said, they're good trucks, but they're, they're, uh, the newest one's nineteen eighty. And we've got seventy-four and seventy-eight, and they're all gas burner, straight shift. So, uh, if anybody has, any other department has a use for them, but.
Well, this board, this board has been taking, uh, it's like Zach's, we've been upgrading that equipment, but we're also getting rid of the old equipment. We don't want something sitting around.
Yeah, yeah, see, these, these are split round, uh, like I said, gas burners, and they're just.
They serve out purpose.
Yeah.
Well, that's one thing that we actually, uh, was looking for, I mean, I know when we, when we were having to make the stuff up again, that was a little. I'm gonna say immediately was to upgrade these tankers. And, uh, so, when, when we were working on the budget, we actually put that, orders coming out of the, our funds.
Right.
So we have the funds for the.
Yeah.
So, we had, uh, and we had, we'd anticipated maybe two to two fifty.
Right.
So we, when we were working on the budget, we only thought we were, like, we can only get two right now.
Right.
So with budget in the five hundred thousand, we'd be able to take care of all of it.
Yeah.
We'd be able to replace the fleet.
Yeah.
So to speak.
So with the budget, so, uh, obviously we're definitely thinking, my question is, is, um, if the board votes on this tonight to approve this, and we call it tomorrow and say, "Hey, get us two." Can, can we come back, uh, sometime January and say, "Hey, let's get two more?"
That's what she told us. She said, "We could get two this year and then get, put in, get in line and get two more next year."
So, realistically, it's a possibility we could replace four of the five sometime mid next year.
Yeah.
What will the fifth one be?
We'd have to wait till twenty twenty-four for that one.
Right.
We can only get two a year or so.
Yeah.
That'd be a bad, it's a good bid for two guys, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah. Uh, like I said, they're two thousand gallon, quarter, twenty-five hundred gallon trucks, and we're replacing thousand gallon.
Well, tell us about the ISO rating.
Uh, it's a five slash five X right now.
Well, how's this gonna help our citizens? I mean, besides the extra water, of course, but on the ISO.
The ladder racks on the side of them, and be able to get the equipment on that's on the other, we'll get credit times two per class A point of investment station.
So that'll lower that rating even more for the people?
Yes.
And that helps on their insurance?
Yep. And we're shooting for a four now.
We're shooting for a four, absolutely.
And we're up for a state inspection.
Right.
So.
And we have the funds and the rescue money. American Rescue money.
Yep.
So it's, uh, again, that was our goal, was to at least get two. And with this coming fruition here just a little bit, that's fine, and we can get them in the next year or so, that's fantastic, I think, so. Any other discussion on it?
I'm, Larry ain't gonna get to drive it, is he?
Oh, uh.
Okay.
Would you like me to seal it there? All right, no other discussion on this? I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the purchase of two of these vehicles this year. Um, in the amount of ninety-one thousand, six hundred, ninety-one dollars, ninety-five cents each. I'll make that motion. Ask for a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aight.
All right, I'll grab us two of them. Thank you. We'll come back up, hopefully, and see what we can do, thanks. You're also here for, uh, number fifteen. Station five. I did, I have to go out there today, and our contractor that we got out there now is actually finishing up today. Made it look good, real good. All right, I'm up here. Can you hear me better than that?
Speak up.
There you go. Well, I can't holler. I was known as the soft spoken fire chief for the four mountains.
Yeah, the jumps and bows.
Check that out. Anyway, I did go out there today, they did make it look really good. And as far as taking a few more trees down, going ahead, you know, stretching that out just a little bit more. We've got a little bit more work there to do as far as trees. We've got a little bit more work there to do as far as trees, and as far as going ahead and moving forward to it for station five. Okay. Um, so like at this time, are you requesting that we put it out for bid, right? Yes. For the construction? Um, Mr. Serchey, any?
I'm sorry, man, I'll get her bill.
Mr. Patrick?
No, we need to get, get down, see if it's possible, I don't think.
Yep, I'm, uh, again, we're thankful to be in this position to be able to do this, cause if you, if anybody has business, station five, we know that it needs a lot of work to begin with, but it's also some land issues, uh, that we had discussed earlier in the year. Um, if a warrant, if you're buying the property to begin with, so, uh, we're thankful to be here and hopefully, hopefully we can get this thing done sooner than later, so. Um, so we make the bid, put it out for, uh, we make the motion, put it out for bid. Do we, is it thirty days, or how do we?
He would, he would send out a request for proposal, have the date, I think she wanted those turned back in, and then y'all will open them soon. Claire, if you'll reach out to me, the help will be provided.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we put, uh, fire station number five out for a bid proposal, I'll make that motion, ask for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Is this, do you have a design in all this?
Yeah, someone, I mean, it'll be a basic design that'll get us in, it'll be a red iron building. With the inside built out, kind of like what we got up there.
Okay. Be a nice looking building. Got a. Do you get to see these, uh?
He'll let me see them.
Make sure he sees them.
Well, I'll be able to see, I'll be able to work on them.
You'll be driving my key.
I mean, what are the colors?
Well, is that the colors of the, of the metal? Is that what that is?
I'm looking to seek something like that. Uh, maybe like that.
How, how much is something like that?
Well, and that's just it, uh, there, we've got two different prices, hearsay prices so far, one of them's at a hundred thousand, other one's a little over a hundred thousand. But then again, let's not finish it at the inside, and then is that giving us the fourteen foot doors that we asked for in the cheap one? And it wasn't, and I think that's when we decided we need to go with a plan and put it out for bid.
Makes that good doors and stuff, no crap on there, no.
Yep, thank y'all. Appreciate it.
No, thank you guys.
He was posted on the, when them two will be in, we'll go from there.
All right.
Uh, before we get to, uh, number sixteen, I wanna revisit number, uh, four, Mr. Nicholson?
Uh, the builder, Jimmy Underwood, and the HLA, they've all made some concessions there, and they're all in agreement, there's no problem, they're fine with the variance going forward. Jimmy's gotta do a few things with the HLA, everything should be fine now.
Very good. We appreciate your help and gratitude.
Is anybody in here still posing that? All right, so, um, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the variance request for Jimmy Underwood, I'll ask for a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh. Good deal.
All right, so number sixteen is the board discussion action on the fourth board, uh, commissioner's meeting in December. Uh, customarily, I believe it has been, um, since we've been keeping up, we have, uh, um, put off the last meeting, um, of the year. Just for obvious reasons with, with holidays and everything, uh, people not being able to make it, like, be on vacation with kids or something to that effect, so. Um, any discussion on that before we move forward?
No, I haven't.
All right, so I'll make a motion that, uh, we cancel, um, the last meeting of this year, and ask for a second?
I'll go there.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, so that brings us to public commentary. Jimmy, come on up here.
That's a seventy-two year old man needs to stay off of step ladders.
There's a lot of.
I think it's Bill Burns, uh, I've been a resident of Fannin County now for three years, my wife and I retired here from out of state. And, uh, I come before you today to ask, uh, for your consideration for a noise ordinance in Fannin County. Uh, I've got quite a bit of anecdotal, uh, information, but I'm only going tonight due to the time or constraints. I'm only gonna talk personal issues at this point. Uh, about a year ago, we started having serious noise problems in our subdivision, uh.
Give me the location, where, where you live?
I live in Mountain Topps.
Mountain Topps.
Yes, sir. And, uh, it's not just one house, there's, uh, three that I know of, they're all rental, and it's the rental folks coming in and making it uninhabitable for the homeowners. Uh, just a case in point, we had one issue at a property near mine, uh, almost a year ago now, and I spoke with you on the phone about it when we had it, but, uh, I was sitting on my patio on Saturday trying to watch college football, and I couldn't hear my TV with it on full volume because of the party across the valley a hundred yards away. So I got me a meter and tested, and I was getting eighty-two decibels on my patio at a hundred yards. All right, so, and then we've had a couple other at the, in, in that area, at that property, we've had a couple other parties, um. When we had the, when we had the first one, I got in touch with several folks in the county and asked what we do. And one of the folks I talked to was our sheriff, and he was great helping me address the issues and what we could do and what we couldn't do. And actually, a couple times, uh, sent out deputies just to make a courtesy call on the parties. We had a party there about five months ago that had a series of eight six-foot tall, five thousand watt speakers around the pool. Uh, my decibel meter was pegged out that night, so we left, we went to a hotel in Cleveland and stayed there until the weekend was over. Uh, so that's a couple, so anyway. I spent the last six months staying every county in the state, a hundred and ninety-two of them, I think, and looked at what their noise ordinances are, if they have one. And codifying what was common to all of them into a document, throwing away the stuff that I thought was onerous, keeping the good stuff. And what I found is over eighty-six percent of the counties in this state have noise ordinances on the books. And, uh, so I'm asking that, uh, I've written a document, I don't ask anybody to do a lot of work on my behalf, I've written it. You can have a copy if you want, or I'll throw them away, but, uh, I've spent a lot of time over the last six or seven months coming up with this.
I'd like a copy.
All right, yeah. Uh, the effects it's starting to have, we've had two property owners sell and leave the county. We've got a couple other folks that are putting their house on the market because they didn't know that we couldn't do anything about this kind of an issue. And, uh, in October, I guess all of you are familiar with this, uh, Facebook page and, uh, we love Blue Ridge or whatever it is, uh, it's called In Love With Blue Ridge. And, uh, in October, some person in Florida wrote in and said, uh, we're thinking about moving there, building a house and retiring. And they got a number of comments saying, don't come to Fannin County, you'll regret it, the property values are gonna go down, you know, which that's, that's noise, that's more noise, but people recommending that folks don't come to our county because we can't control these renters. I wanna try to stop that if we can. So I'm asking for some help, uh, we're starting to affect the, our homeowners that have bought here and paid taxes here, we're starting to affect their ability to enjoy their properties and, kind of begging for some help.
I'm sorry you had to go, uh, away for the weekend, that's, that's, that's terrible.
When you can't speak to your family in a normal phone voice in your own house, it's time to take them on a special trip. Again, as I said, I used the eighty, eighty-five, eighty-six percent, I think a hundred and thirty-eight counties had, six months ago, had noise ordinances, two more, I'm told. But I didn't go back and look, I've adopted them, but I took everything that was common and put it in this document. I threw away some real ugly stuff that some of the counties have in, and the stuff that would work and be on a gentleman basis is in the document.
Well, thank you and just know that this is, I mean, this, you're not the first one to come up, I think we all share the same concerns. Um, we've said it several times, we all have rental cabins around us and we all feel the pain, it's just a matter of putting it on paper and making it happen, and that's what we intend to do, so.
If there's anything I can do to help.
Thank you for this, and, and, Mr. Ross will definitely look over that and see what we can make happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. How are you?
I'm tired, how are you?
I'm sorry.
Tired. So you guys know I'm Julie Wood and here in Dan County, so I'm actually here tonight because I don't come to all the meetings, but I watch them on YouTube as soon as he gets them up. I'm subscribed, you're welcome, I hit the button. Um, so what I've noticed, it's been a long, it's been a hard year, it's been a long year, it's been a hard two years, um, wouldn't want to sit on any of your guys' meetings, everyone. I watch on social media, and as you guys are ridiculed, you're put down, there's complaint after complaint. I don't see people coming with solutions, I see everybody coming with complaints, you and I have talked about this in great length. So what I'd like to do is, um, a little bit of my personal experience that I've had with Fannin County in the last two years. So two years ago, I met Larry Thomas, actually for the first time, you're a dirty joke, I was actually laughing because it comes into play because he lived it. Um, I got called in on a rescue at a private, at a private property. On that private property, we ended up finding two horses, one horse barely had his nose out of the mud, um, actively dying. Called nine-one-one, my first time dealing with nine-one-one in this county. I had him, um, lady named Melissa, who was the dispatcher, call like nobody, nobody would know how to handle it, I don't know how to do horses, um, she got on the phone. So when we're waiting on Cherokee Fire and Rescue, Mr. Thomas came out, and he was there from literally beginning then, it was a six and a half hour, seven hour day. So he was nothing but helpful, um, he was in that mud, he was pulling, putting straps, he was pulling horses, we got one horse out for the king. So that was my first feeling with Larry Thomas, um, phenomenal, phenomenal guy, great asset to your team.
So, hang on one second, did you take pictures of this?
Could you stretch that, Larry?
You what?
Did you take pictures of this?
We have pictures.
Nobody gonna leak the speed.
You still got the pictures on your phone? We've got photos.
Yeah, you know, taking for talking for.
Yeah, no, he was, he, we were all literally ways deep, if not further in this, because when you get in the mud, it sucks and you end. So that was my first feeling with your, your fire chief, um, very, very impressed. So, and then we go a little further, um, Dane Kirby I dealt with this year, because Dane went and he made him arrest at a, at a drug house. Called me up, there were some animals there that needed to be removed, Dane met me at the property, super helpful guy, the guy can catch criminals like nobody's business, don't ask him to catch a chicken or a rooster, he has no idea. Great guy, very helpful, um, was very appreciative of, you know, he, he cared enough in order to say, let's, let's get him in the safety. And then the next one, as you know, we had a death out at our property, um, late this summer. It's the first time I've met your coroner and your deputy coroner, um, those ladies, you guys have some of the best that I've ever dealt with, and I've, in my previous career, you know, I dealt with coroners like that. They were cunning, they were very professional, job got done well as a job like that could be done. And, um, my daughter was home from college, they actually made sure she was okay, you know, is there anything we can do, and, um, they've got a great team with them. So then we're gonna get to what you guys normally see me in here for, and that's animal control, you know I've been one of the biggest critics. So in the last two years, I watched, with all of your guys' help, animal control start to turn around. We've seen huge improvements with them, I've been spending a lot of time, um, with animal control since Jane got put in the department head. That lady literally walked in to a mess that it doesn't matter if somebody's there for a month or if somebody's there for ten years. Because as you guys know, this county shut down the Akita puppy mill. So not only is she dealing with a new job, but now she's dealing with fifty, sixty, seventy Akitas, nowhere to put them, every run in that, in that kennel was full. While I've been there, what I've watched, I've defended Luke literally from the start, it was when he started there, I actually called you and I said, look, he's getting ready to go to Florida, you better get him full time, we don't wanna lose him, he is a phenomenal worker. What I've seen with Luke, Luke is, it, he's, it's almost like he, he can talk to the dogs. You can have an aggressive dog there, Luke's the first one to go in, he's sitting down, he's petting it. Jane, she's overwhelmed, well, obviously, but Jane, she's making sure everybody stays on, on task, she's making the phone calls to rescues, she's reaching out. You know, and we're trying to help get these dogs placed. You've got Teresa, that, we walked by one dog, rattling the bark, and, and Teresa goes, you sit down, and that dog literally stopped, sat down. And she went in that kennel and she sat there and petted him, she's like, he's just scared. You've got Amy, um, part-timer, one of the best workers I've ever seen, never not has a smile on her face. She'll go in and clean kennels, she'll be at that sink washing bowls, doesn't matter, she does it with a smile. You've got JR, JR's come a long way, um, you know, but there was a lot of complaints with JR, JR will jump in and do anything without anybody but saying, I need you to do this. Your animal control has turned completely around, and for that, I am so grateful. Um, we're grateful you guys shut down the Akita puppy mill because, you know, Brady's been in here month after month, year after year. So we're working on getting those dogs placed, I think we've placed eleven so far, we've got, how many are going to transport Thursday, like, we've got nineteen, or, yeah, nineteen leaving tomorrow. I think four, I think, leaving Thursday, so I mean, we're, we're, we're getting them, and we're hoping to get some of the dogs out of Fannin Animal Control as well. So as everybody sits in here, it's all the negative, you guys need to understand, you've got some phenomenal people that are employed by this county, and they need to be acknowledged. They need to be appreciated because this, that's not the normal, especially in the big city I came from, you don't have that friendliness to where people actually care. So I just kinda wanted to end the year on a positive note, instead of you guys always getting cussed out, cursed out, thank you for not blocking my phone number yet, I know it's probably come close a few times, um. So we're just appreciative, and I'm hoping that next year even does a lot more positive, so, that's all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
So, anyone else? I, I, I do wanna comment on something, you would say, we, we do have some outstanding people to work for this county. And, um, I, I wanna, you might put him in shock, but I'm gonna look at the camera and thank James Bond for, for challenging me to go to animal control and work in a couple of days. Because I have a newfound respect for, for the folks that work in animal control. Um, me and Luke actually, it's, it's almost like a Starsky and Hutch thing in, in animal control, uh, him being the, the lead guy, obviously. Um, but it's, I don't think I could do that every day, I'm not gonna lie to you, but these guys do it, and, and they get criticized constantly on stuff they're not doing and stuff they should be doing. And, and my, my hope is that as we have a, I guess we'll, we'll say ninety percent of our brand new staff with, with basically a year's, um, under the belt, a year under the belt, um, that some of the folks that have, have come to us with complaints also bring those solutions like we talked about. If you know more about something than I do, I'm listening. There, there's no doubt about it, there's things in this position right here that I have no clue about, but I listen. And, and if you have a suggestion that's gonna benefit something in this county, I'm listening, and we were trying to put that into place.
I have a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to start having coffee at these meetings.
We'll work on it, but we'll have to have more coffee breaks.
Don't use okay at that.
Thank you, ma'am.
And don't.
I, I, I shake your back, you're making off that. But all jokes aside, um, in every department we have, a new department head's sitting here tonight, um, thank y'all, thank y'all so much for what you do, because. Thank y'all so much for what you do because a lot, more often than not, it's a thankless job. And it is. And, um, and I just appreciate everyone else and, uh, definitely wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and twenty twenty-three is gonna be much better than twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two was much better than twenty twenty-one. So just stand by and see what happens for us, but, um, do you want anything else, anybody else, public commentary? Going once, going twice? Closed public comment, commentary. Do you want anything else before we?
No, I concur, I'm excited about our animal control. And I appreciate the encouragement that you give us, it, it is, uh, very appreciated and, uh, you know, hear a lot of it at times, but I, I'm excited about the, the changes made and improvements made, uh, with our animal control. And, uh, I, I really do appreciate all of you, with your interest in Fannin County and we'll work with you to, uh, to make it better. To make it better. And I hope you all have a Merry Christmas.
I just wanna say thank you, uh, I'm excited that we, where we, what we've done in two years and, and like the chairman said, twenty twenty-three's gonna be even better. Cause Lord knows where our hearts is at and, uh, we do have good employees. I'm proud to be a part of the team. We have, always have good citizens coming out of these meetings and, uh, we get to hear what you, what you, what's on your minds and that's good and, uh, so, uh, Merry Christmas to everybody, God bless and I hope you have a great New Year.
All right, gentlemen, uh, bring us to executive session. I do have a need for executive session tonight, um, so I'll make a motion to go into executive session for a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'll make a motion, we, uh, come out of the executive session back to our regular meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Following the executive session, we discussed property or real estate and, uh, personnel, um, no action taken. I'll make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?